Our next speaker is number 31, Tom Knipe.
My name's Tom Knipe, T-O-M-K-N-I-P-E. I'm here--
Tom, can I interrupt you just for a second? Our next speakers, number 33 through 40, should come down and line up. Sorry about that.
Do I still get three minutes?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Okay, thanks for sure. So, I'm here on behalf of the Strategic Tourism Planning Board. I staffed that board as a county planner with Tompkins County. And the STPB is an 18-member citizen advisory board that advises the county on the use of hotel occupancy tax monies to promote economic development and enhance quality of life in the county. And the STPB wants to direct their comments specifically to the Economic Assessment Report. Speaking of tourism in Tompkins County, protection and enhancement of the visual scenery, cultural and heritage assets, and transportation infrastructure are vital to the tourism sector here. And it's a critical component of our economic health and quality of life and a growth industry for the county. Between 2005 and 2010, tourism generated 26% more economic activity in that period. Now, in 2010, $157 million in local spending, 2,300 jobs, local taxes of $11.2 million, state taxes of $9.7 million, and direct labor income of $50 million. In addition, the tourism industry generated almost $1.8 million in hotel occupancy tax. It goes back into bringing more people into the area and investing in the tourism product that also benefits quality of life for local residents. That's just in Tompkins County. Quickly, about specific to tourism, the ESCEIS does mention that there may be negative impacts, but they don't measure them. But they measure the positive impacts, as been mentioned before. Three other comments related to the economy section that STPB would like to make. The long-term implications of regional brand erosion are just not considered by the report. The long-term economic development implications are not considered. But there is a very rich literature in the economic development field that demonstrates the negative long-term economic development implications for resource extraction economies related to the boom-bust cycle. Kind of technical, the report uses tourism statistics from Cataragos and Chautauqua Counties to demonstrate the lack of a negative historical impact on tourism from gas drilling in New York State. That's vertical drilling, so you really can't compare them. That's quite obvious. Related to housing, the ESCEIS does say that there'll be a decrease in rental and hotel vacancy rates that will provide short-term economic benefits to some owners and may increase prices charged for these temporary housing units. This should be coupled with a statement about the potential long-term impact on the local hotel industry. For example, if additional rooms are constructed to house gas workers, what happens to occupancy in existing properties when construction tails off and the market's left with additional capacity at the lower end?
We'll give you 10 more seconds because I rudely interrupted you.
The report also doesn't take into account seasonal accountability, which is likely to exacerbate problems in room shortages. Seasonal gas drilling activity coincides with peak hotel room demand, exacerbating the potential displacement of tourists, especially acute during festivals, which we have a lot of great ones right here in Tompkins County. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is actually number 33. There's no 32. Linda Santos.
That's Linda Santos.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you, TCOG, thank you, the State Theater, and thank you, citizens of Tompkins County and our nearby neighbors. I'm a Realtor here in Tompkins County, and I'm thankful to be here to say my piece. I started in the business in 2007, just when the market turned. The confusion surrounding the existing guidelines for hydro fracking makes me wonder if I will still be here as a Realtor in another five years. In my work, I'm expected to be able to do a very good job determining a fair market price for property. When it comes to properties with gas leases or adjacent to them, it's about as clear to me as mud these days. Until a new 21st century valuation system is devised to address the questions of value and taxation, Realtors and property owners and buyers will be in a quandary and will be essentially living out a version of the Wild, Wild West. A certain kind of lawlessness is at hand that is making it possible for more powerful forces to dominate the landscape, literally and figuratively. And by lawlessness, I mean a lack of meaningful policy that will actually afford protection and a fair value-for-value exchange. People have no way to come to grips with what fair value is at the moment. This is creating a lot of confusion, and it already is bringing a significant slowdown to the buying and selling of property where gas leases are in place. And it will get worse until it's better understood and clearer guidelines are in place. To illustrate, I will describe a recent attempt by one of my clients to purchase land in an area with active gas leases. The subject property was a 30-acre parcel with a hefty price tag way out of line for what is common in that area. The owner was basing his asking price on the anticipated value of a future income stream from hydro fracking. But could anyone know what that actual value was without any actual gas production? Further, who is putting stock in the outdated methods that are currently in place to attempt to derive value and therefore taxation on the gas produced? My client proceeded, in spite of the high price, to put in an offer. It was a great offer that the seller rejected. Client made a higher offer, about two and a half times greater, still rejected. Later, the seller came back to ask for two things: an even higher price and a participation agreement that would entitle him to split any future royalties with my client, the buyer. Since this was not acceptable to my client, that offer and counteroffer died. A week or two later, another great parcel of land came on the market at less than half the price per acre of the previous lot. This owner had a different concern. Upon selling, he would insert a deed restriction. No gas leases would be allowed on the property at all. My client jumped at that, made an offer at nearly 100% of asking price, but the owner suddenly withdrew the property from the market. Once again, a potential sale died. This type of activity shows me that there is a lot of confusion at hand in regards to gas leases and what they are worth. That is one topic. A looming underbelly topic is what will the land be worth in the post-drilling and leasing world? What will the land look like? What will gas-depleted land be worth? And what will the new values be once this is all over?
Thank you. Our next speaker, number 34, Jeremy Alderman.
My name is Jeremy Alderson. A-L as in Louis, D as in David, E-R-S-O-N. I am the editor of the No Frack Almanac. Because I have a-- thank you-- because I have a newspaper, I go around a lot to state distributing copies. I gave one to a barber in Omira. I said, "Here, it's a new anti-fracking newspaper. We're trying to stop this drilling." He said, "Why would you want to do that?" I said, "Well, there's so many reasons. That's why we put out the paper." And he looked at me, and he thought, and he said, "Are you from Ithaca?" "I'm not, but it's good to be here among friends and to have a chance to directly address Diane from the DEC and anyone else at the DEC who might be reading this." And what I want to say is, Diane, it's time for a mutiny at the DEC. I don't know what your personal position is, Diane, or anybody else who might be reading this, but there's got to be a lot of dissent at the DEC. The state is divided between, basically, the people who think the most important thing is money and the people who think there's anything else more important than money. You can't all be mercenaries at the DEC! And yet, what do we get from you? It is now only a little more than a year since your then-director Pete Granis, no hero of the environmental movement, wrote a memo leaked to the press in which he said, "The public doesn't know how badly it's being served by us. We're in the worst shape we've been in in 40 years." And what happened to Pete Granis? He was fired two days later for telling the truth. And what do we get instead? I have had the privilege of interviewing the Deputy Director of Public Affairs or whatever, Emily DeSantis, of your boss, I assume, Diane. She's a very intelligent woman, but she comes off, unfortunately, as a complete buffoon. Don't mind if you tell her that, because she has to give these stupid answers to serious questions. I said to her what many people would like to ask: "How come New York is exempt and Syracuse is exempt and we're not?" "Oh, because they don't have sediment filters." "Well, we don't have sediment filters either." "Oh, well, that's why we're having these hearings." "But how did it get in the hearings in the first place? And it's in there because-- how did it get in there when it doesn't really distinguish anything?" "Oh, you'd have to talk to our scientific panel about that." We get this kind of nonsense and double-talk, plus in ESCEIS, more tainted than Monica Lewinsky's blue dress as an answer-- as an answer to people who are concerned about their futures, their livelihoods, and the health and the health of their children. This is a disgrace! So, I would-- I would like to invite you at the DEC to become something new, which I'll call a pure activist. Probably, some of you are thinking, "Well, what can I do if I quit? I'm out of the paper in a day, and then I'm on the worst job market and hence the Great Depression for the rest of my life."
Thank you.
So, I would suggest you go on strike and cite the Nuremberg Laws, that you can't be made to commit crimes against humanity, and make them go to court to stop you!
Thank you. Speaker number 35, V.R. Little.
How does one follow that? I'm Verna Little. I live on a hill back up here. If you go down 69, you'll pass my house. It's right on the top of that Marcellus shale pile back up there. So, I'm a little concerned about what's happening here and what's happening in Danby and what's happening around us. And I have been absolutely delighted with the informative, exciting, frightening messages that I've heard tonight. I'm not exactly a dummy. I taught college for a while and have some letters after my name, but no one can keep track of the detail that we've heard tonight. And I want to thank every one of you who prepared those long papers and let us know what you've learned. I've learned some things that relate to a couple of the last two speakers. One is the concern that an owner of land has about what's going on around us. Living on top of that pile of Marcellus shale is really scary. Talking with people here just tonight, I said, "Well, I don't know whether I should just sell my old house and get the hell out or whether I dare risk staying." I'm old. I'm 75. I have had all the problems that we all know about that relate to growing up in an oil-invasive environment. I grew up in Oklahoma, earlier than I want to tell you about. But nevertheless, I was 12 years old before I was ever able to lie down and breathe. Drumright, Sepulpa, a dozen other funny-named towns were all part of oilfield development. The odor, the smell, the traffic, the noise-- it's just not a healthy environment in which to live. So, as a kid, I had massive, terrible attacks when I couldn't breathe. When my parents left Oklahoma, we went to New Mexico, up in the mountains, where my dad was in the Air Force. Some of you may know about something called World War II. And I began to breathe, first time in my life. We were out of the Oklahoma mess. There are so many things that I would like to say. The reality that this fight is one between corporate and corporate greed, corporations and corporate greed. This fight is between them and what we want to think of as ourselves, as a democracy. But corporations are not democratic.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 36, William George.
William George, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-G-E-O-R-G-E. Thank you all. I worked in industry for over 20 years in the environmental and safety fields. And for something different, I'd like to talk about the regulation first. The proposed regulation, New York State should reinstate in the regulation all protections and accompanying New York State and federal regulations from the exemptions given the oil and gas industry from the following federal laws: the Clean Water Act, the Clean Drinking Water Act, the Clean Air Act, RECR, or the Hazardous Waste Act, SARAH Title III, or the Community Right to Know, and Emergency Response Acts. All of these were exempted back in 2005 in the so-called Energy Bill. As far as the ESCEIS, I want to support the call for a comprehensive cumulative review of the hydro fracking process, including but not necessarily limited to, first, the economic impacts, specifically jobs, as this is touted as the big benefit of fracking. What I'm saying next is anecdotal and second-hand info, but it speaks to the issue. At the Locksheld Drake hearings I attended, many speakers said, "Why should my children have to go to PA for jobs?" But another speaker, who spent two weeks in Pennsylvania doing fact-finding on their own expense and time, heard from an in-owner, where they finally found a space to stay, that the in-owner was tired of running a dormitory for boys from Wyoming, Colorado, and Texas. Are those boys' parents back in Wyoming, Colorado, and Texas saying, "Why shouldn't my children have to go to Pennsylvania and New York to find jobs?" It's all turned on its head. But also, the comprehensive review should include public health, individual health, specifically medical and financial compensation, and the banning of nondisclosure or gag order settlements by the industry, worker occupational safety and health, even if the workers are from out of state, and a review of pipelines, compressive stations, and other ancillary equipment, which is completely omitted from the draft ESCEIS. Thank you.
Thank you. And a quick reminder that speakers with numbers that are greater than 70 can have-- and to have their notes written, can drop them off in the back. It's likely that we'll probably not get to speakers much higher in number than 70. Our next speaker is number 37, Michael Petkov. And, Michael, if you could stay later, I need you to sign this.
Okay. Michael Petkov, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-P-E-T-K-O-V. Mudjack!
Mudjack!
We have an addiction!
We have an addiction!
To fossil fuels!
To fossil fuels!
And now they want to continue it!
They want to continue it!
They want to bring it to upstate New York!
They want to bring it to upstate New York!
And we say no!
We say no!
We do not!
We do not!
Want to become--
Want to become--
The next Alberta!
The next Alberta!
The next Saudi Arabia!
The next Saudi Arabia!
The next Texas!
The next Texas!
We don't want our people plagued by diseases!
We don't want our people plagued by diseases!
We have been blessed!
We have been blessed!
With beautiful land!
With beautiful land!
Lots of fertile soil!
Lots of fertile soil!
And people who are willing to give it their all to ensure--
To give it their all!
To ensure that man and nature can live within harmony.
To ensure that man and nature can live within harmony!
And ESCEIS threatens this!
And ESCEIS threatens this!
They are wanting, willing, to open the doors of New York!
They are willing to open the doors of New York!
To multinational corporations!
To multinational corporations!
Who care nothing about greed! I mean-- I mean, who care nothing about-- who care nothing about the people!
Who care nothing about the people!
And only greed!
And only greed!
We say no to fracking!
We say no to fracking!
This is our time!
This is our time!
At the edge of the common man!
At the edge of the common man!
We are the 99%!
We are the 99%!
We are the 99%!
We are the 99%! We are 99%! We are 99%! We are 99%!
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 38, Ed Nizalowski.
Very good. Yes, that's Ed Nizalowski, E-D-N-I-Z-A-L-O-W-S-K-I. I'm retired high school librarian, living in Newark Valley, Tioga County. My profession involves collecting, categorizing, and assessing information on most any topic under the sun and doing what I can to assist anyone who walks through the door to make sense of this information. I have read more about hydrofracturing than I ever wanted to and have collected hundreds of newspaper articles, magazine articles, emails, and website links about this topic. I am also a local historian, and I would posit that this is one of the most controversial issues in the history of New York State and certainly one of the most controversial for both the Southern Tier and the Finger Lakes Region. In terms of environmental issues, I can't think of any other that has generated this much discussion and acrimony or whose importance equals that of gas drilling. And looking at both sides of the issue, I feel that there are numerous reasons to reject the DSCEIS draft as written, including lack of treatment for hydrofracturing fluids, lack of protection for drinking water and air quality, lack of assessment on public health, and lack of staff to monitor the gas drilling activities. I further feel that hydrofracturing should be banned completely for the previous reasons, along with a track record by energy companies on the environment that is disturbing, numerous individuals who have already experienced tainted water and severe health problems, rosy job creation scenario that is misleading, potential increase in seismic activity, and associated impacts on our general welfare that have not been adequately addressed. And looking at the bigger picture, however, this is one battle in a much larger war. We may want to demonize the energy companies, but every time we look into the mirror, we are gazing at their accomplices. The United States has 5% of the world's population and consumes 24% of the world's energy supplies. We throw out 200,000 tons of edible food every day, which amounts to 30 million tons of food over a space of a year. By age 75, the average American has generated 52 tons of garbage. We have more shopping malls than high schools. I could give further statistics of this type, but I think you get the picture. We need to examine and change an economy and a lifestyle that is so heavily dependent on consumption of the earth's finite resources, including fossil fuels. Instead of constantly looking for more of these finite resources, we need to concentrate our efforts, both in getting more efficiency in our energy use and to develop those energy resources that are sustainable and renewable. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite up to line up speakers number 41 through 48. And our next speaker is number 39, Ross Horowitz.
I'm a member of the Danby Gas Drilling Task Force. We've reached a point where polite panel discussions about the impending doom are out of place. The DEC's record on the issue of gas drilling, as shown by Walter Hang at Toxic's targeting, involves denial and ignoring. This continues as the RDSCEIS attempts to mitigate, not by risk analysis, but again by ignoring. The DEC and Governor Cuomo didn't realize that an issue of this magnitude required the Departments of Health, Agriculture, Transportation, the PSC, and every state and federal office concerned with water quality, hydrology, and the geology of the Appalachian Basin to be at the table from the outset, and that input from health professionals, the wine and tourist industries, organic farmers, and engineers who are familiar with fracking should have been mandatory. Governor Cuomo didn't realize that an issue of this magnitude requires regional planning at the most comprehensive level and not divisive distinctions that pit one area against another. This issue involves the entire region. The gas industry knows that the projected fracking of the Marcellus and Utica shales in New York State will require nothing less than widespread repeated drilling and fracking for many decades. In Section 7.4.2, the RDSCEIS considers mitigating the effects of invasive species. The gas industry itself should be considered an occupying force and an invasive species. The RDSCEIS shows that the DEC is structurally unable to address an issue of this magnitude in a responsible way. The relevant state agencies and departments have no precedent for dealing with an issue of this complexity over such a large part of the state for such a long period. The state's laws have no precedent for such an issue. Until the industry extracting and distributing unconventional gas resources uses and pays for a technology proven to be compatible with agriculture and tourism, a technology proven to be compatible with the region's demographics, a technology proven to be without threat to public health, without threat to the region's fresh water supply, and without committing New York State to decades of greenhouse gas degradation. Until that time, there is only one choice: get on with the serious business of building sustainable industries, protecting water, our most valuable resource, and ban fracking in New York State.
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 40, Lawrence McCann. Oh, he already told me he wasn't going to be here. Sorry about that. Our next speaker is number 41, Jeff Andrusik.
Andrusik, A-N-D-R-Y-S-I-C-K. I'm Jeff, and my wife is Jody, and we are farmers-turned-filmakers against frac and produced all Fracked Up 1 and 2. Several years ago, I heard that frac was safe, responsible, clean, green, and patriotic. Then around two years ago, Chesapeake Energy wanted to dump, for starters, 1 billion gallons of toxic frac waste fluid from Pennsylvania under our town of Potenly, only a half a mile from Cuculap. I felt like I was hit in the head with a truth brick. How can frac be safe, responsible, clean, green, and patriotic when Chesapeake Energy had to haul their waste out of PA and into New York? Potenly won its battle against Chesapeake, and after making two documentaries, we came to these conclusions. Fracking is a crime since 70,000 proposed wells in New York will use up a volume of water that is the equivalent of Cuculap to do all the fracks and in the process, contaminate this fresh water. Fracking is a crime since fracking fluids have a much greater chance of being released into water supplies in eastern U.S. black shales, since these shales are much more fractured than western black shales. Fracking is a crime since fracked areas have the worst air pollution in the whole USA. Fracking is a crime since it destroys tourism, which is already a healthy, sustainable, and growing economy. Fracking is a crime since it uses water as a medium to get gas and only gets a fraction of the recoverable reserve for the leaseholder and permanently ruins the reserve for future safe, responsible, promising technology. Fracking is a crime since venting and flaring wastes the resource and short-changes the leaseholder. Fracking is a crime since gas workers are not protected and are misled as to how dangerous the chemicals are that they use. Fracking is a crime since the bulk of New York gas will go to foreign markets. Fracking is a crime since it ruins people's water wells and property values. Fracking is a crime since the cost of gas is swollen by 2/3 and the gas companies hustle leaseholders, giving them a fraction of what it's worth. Fracking is a crime since gas corporations wreck roads and bridges with hollow promises to fix them when they're done. Fracking is a crime since 1/3 of concrete well casings fail immediately and 2/3 eventually, just thus polluting groundwater. Fracking is a crime since gas companies only treat a small fraction of their colossal waste while the bulk of it is run through sewage treatment plants that are not designed to process toxic waste or it is illegally dumped or is passed off as a safe alternative to snow removal and dust control for roads. Fracking is a crime since there is a tenfold increase in drug trafficking in fracked areas. DEC, you don't regulate crime. Please, DEC, do not become an accomplice to the crimes of the fracsters or you will lose your remaining authority. Listen to the wise voices within your organization and protect New York State from the dangers of fracking. Why are three Finger Lakes protected while the rest of us remain open season to the gas gangsters? We demand a ban. Jody and I have 100 movies here to donate for groups or towns libraries as we walk up the aisle. So, just raise your hand if you want a movie.
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 42, Mary Jane Uttech.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jane Uttech. That's M-A-R-Y-J-A-N-E-U-T-T-E-C-H. I'm the Deputy Public Health Director for Cortland County Health Department, and I am representing the Health Department in my comments. We have many concerns about the ESCEIS, but I will focus on just two tonight. The first is our ongoing concern that the DSCEIS faces such things as setbacks in water well testing on arbitrary distances-- well testing on arbitrary distances rather than the unique hydrogeology of any given area. We have one instance in our county where brine from a holding pond migrated 3,200 feet to contaminate the wells of 14 families. This is beyond the testing distance proposed in the ESCEIS. Just yesterday, I spoke with a woman from Maryland, New York, who told me that multiple people in her area have been having problems with their water ever since a vertical well was drilled there two years ago. Most of those people live at least a mile from a drilling site. Based on the hydrogeology of an area, the testing and setback distances the DEC has proposed will sometimes be woefully inadequate. Local health departments have a wealth of knowledge about the hydrogeology of their counties as well as other critical information about their jurisdictions. For this reason, we propose that local health departments be involved with the permitting process. Another concern is enforcement. Although adherence to regulations cannot prevent a catastrophe, we know that lack of adherence to regulations increases the likelihood of accidents. Dr. Goldstein, Director of the University of Pittsburgh Center for Healthy Environments and Communities, pointed out in a presentation that the number of violations per well for different gas companies in Pennsylvania ranged widely from 0 to 2.7. For some companies, it is less expensive to pay for a violation than it is to correct a problem, and a culture of ignoring the rules persists. Such companies should not be given permits to drill in New York. Alcoa Corporation was able to reduce their already good track record for workplace accidents to almost zero, all due to a no-tolerance policy for managers having workplace accidents on their watch. This shows how much corporation policy can dramatically reduce accidents. DEC must hold corporations responsible. The air we breathe and the water we drink, and ultimately, the public's health, are at stake. There also must be serious consequences for inspectors who do not enforce the regulations. Some people have expressed concern about DEP inspectors in Pennsylvania using their positions as a training ground for a higher-paying job with a gas company that they are charged with overseeing. The DEC needs to ensure that this doesn't happen in New York. Thank you.
Thank you.